Aloha, Kako. Welcome and good evening and a happy new year. My name is James Huestis and I'm the president of the Waimea Community Association. Thank you to those joining us online tonight for our regular monthly Waimea Community Association town meeting. Tonight, we'll be hearing important updates relating to the challenges our community faces during this time. And we are grateful to be joined by our elected officials representing the larger Waimea area. I encourage you to follow, like, and subscribe to the Waimea Community Association on Facebook, Instagram, and our YouTube channels. You may also find relevant information and resources on our website at waimetown.org. We strive to keep our accounts active and up to date. At this point, I would like to recognize the Waimea Community Association board members, our vice president, Michael Donnelly, our treasurer, Jeremy Madrid, our secretary, Nancy Carr Smith, and our directors Frankie Pang, Riley Smith, Lonnie Olson Chong, David Greenwell, and Patty Cook. As you may note, we've had a change to our board structure recently. And we want to thank Llewellyn Kumali for his years of service to the Waimea Community Association, drawing upon his connection to the Waimea Seniors Club. And we're also extremely grateful to Louis Dubois for stepping into the role of the Waimea Community Association treasurer over the past couple of years. We want to wish Llewellyn and Louis all the best in their next endeavors. I'm also grateful to Nancy Carr Smith for her continued support of the Waimea Community Association and her willingness to step back into the role of secretary once again. And lastly, we are thrilled to have Jeremy Madrid join our board and into the role of the Waimea Community Association treasurer. Thank you, Jeremy. Would you like to share a couple of words with the community while we have you on here?
Well, I'd just like to say hi, everybody. It's just an honor to be part of such an amazing organization. And I'm just here to serve the community. I've lived in some amazing communities across the United States, but this is the one I call home. The one I'm raising a family and make this place a better community. Yeah, and it's not hard when you're surrounded by such quality people such as James and Patty and Michael. So I think it's going to be an easy trek for me, and I appreciate all of you and looking forward to doing some great things.
Thank you so much, Jeremy. I appreciate those words. I'm also honored to serve on the Waimea Community Association Board as its president. And I'm thankful to a strong team of individuals that are community-minded, that love our beautiful town of Waimea here, and continue to support the work of the Waimea Community Association has done over the years. And of course, on behalf of the Waimea Community Association Board, we are grateful for the support shown by you, our community, and viewers to hold virtual town meetings during this time. And much like last year, we will continue to hold town meetings in this virtual setting with our aim to provide you a connection to community leaders and an opportunity to learn about important and relevant information. Thank you all for your interest in joining us for those past meetings over the year and for viewing and sharing those recordings. You're always welcome to revisit and re-watch those videos up on our Facebook page or up on our YouTube channel. The Waimea Community Association is a nonprofit organization that strives to promote open participation by all of the Waimea community, develop leadership, and support the smart growth of the region. If you'd like to support the work that we have done and help continue our effort in connecting with our community, you are more than welcome to donate or join as a member. If this is something that interests you and you would like more information about this, please email us at waimetown.com or visit our website at waimetown.org. We also are in the midst of, sorry, you're welcome to mail these forms. So we have a form up on our website, mail these forms on our annual dues. Your annual dues to Waimea Community Association at our P.O. Box, P.O. Box 2628, excuse me, 2622, Kamau, Hawaii. This information and more can be found on our website, waimetown.org. We are also in the midst of establishing a digital portal on our website for you to renew your membership and become and/or even become a member. We'll keep you posted on those exciting changes. Your contributions and membership allow us to reach out and connect with the community in this setting and support to the work that the Waimea Community Association has done over the past 60 years. So mahalo nui. And as mentioned and per our agenda tonight, we'll be hearing some important updates from community leaders and our elected officials representing us from multiple levels of government. We'll begin this evening with a community police update from our South Kohala District Police Captain Sherry Byrd. We will also throughout have a couple of community updates. And we will hear from Kahilo Theater, our January nonprofit spotlight, as they share some exciting changes here for the Waimea community. We will then move into the main portion of tonight's agenda as we hear from our elected officials representing the larger Waimea area as they share their public policy goals and priorities for 2021. We are grateful to be joined by Senator Lorraine Noe, Representative Mark Nakashima, Representative David Tarnas, an Office of Affairs trustee, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, excuse me, trustee Keala Lindsay, our county councilors, Councilor Tim Richards, and Councilor Heather Kimball. And this evening, we are grateful to present you with a full and informative agenda. And after we hear from our elected officials, we will have some time at the end of tonight's meeting to answer some of the community questions that have been submitted and those that are captured online. We appreciate community members sending their questions, and we'll try and capture any of those live questions during that portion as well. Please use the Facebook chat to post your live questions, and we'll do the best to share them with our elected leaders here. And thank you to our WCA board members, Lonnie Olson Chong and Mike Donnelly for joining me this evening and presenting these questions. So this time, I'd like to start off our virtual meeting by welcoming Captain Sherry Byrd to the floor to give a community policing update. We are grateful to have Captain Byrd join us on a regular basis and provide these updates. Thank you, Captain Byrd.
Well, you're welcome. Happy New Year's, everybody. For the crime stats for December of last year, I'm happy to report we had no robberies, we had no burglaries. Unfortunately, we did have two stolen vehicles, one from the Parker Ranch Shopping Center parking lot and one from an apartment complex parking lot off Kuaia Highway. We're still working on those, no suspects at this time. And then we did have two reported vehicle break-ins, and both of these stem from cars being towed from various locations, and then the owners reporting some items missing from their vehicles. Also, we had a kind of a sharp increase in DUI arrests. We had 12 DUI arrests last month. And along the crime trends, we did notice a little, we had two separate thefts that took place at the Queen Shops from two different retail stores there. In one incident, though, we were able to track down a male-female couple who was responsible. We recovered all the stolen items and they'll be looking at some criminal charges. And then the other incident, we're still working on, but hopefully we kind of curb that little trend that was happening there. For major traffic accidents, we had eight last month. And you know, I'm sure you guys all drive the roads and noticed the increase in goats and pigs on the road, and especially the deceased ones on the side. But anyways, of those eight major traffic accidents, three involved vehicle-striking pigs or goats. And of those, one driver was one of the DUI arrests. And then the other accidents involved in attention or misjudgment. And other than that, we're a little late in pushing out our January newsletter, but it will be coming out tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Captain Byrd. Thank you. Appreciate your time and joining us here this evening. For this next portion, I'm going to jump to our nonprofit spotlight for January. And I would like to welcome to share with us some exciting news, actually, a past WCA board member and president and the current Kahilo Theater board president, Sherman Warner. I'll make sure you're unmuted there, Sherman.
Hi, thank you, James. I'm president of the board of Kahilo Theater. And these are challenging times for everybody, but in the performing arts business, they're really tough. We've been hit extremely hard. And if we know anything, it's that we'll be among the last sectors of the economy to return to normal. Kahilo Theater has survived the past nine months through grants, a PPP loan that we expect will be forgiven, staff furloughs, salary reductions, but most importantly, through donations from our loyal supporters. We don't know how long this will last, but Kahilo Theater is stable, and we've even launched a new venture that artistic director Chuck Essert will tell you about in a couple of minutes. In June, we began a national search for a new executive director. The search drew applicants from across the country, New York to Honolulu. As three rounds of interviews narrowed the field, travel restrictions and quarantines were rapidly changing, causing us to worry about perhaps having to hire someone who might be relocating from the mainland and whom we might not meet until they showed up for work. But as Dorothy said in The Wizard of Oz, "There's no place like home." We were really lucky. Our top candidate was in Havi. So we look forward to a time when we can welcome you back to the theater and you can meet our new executive director, Sarah Neely, in person. We're thrilled to welcome her. Over to you, Sarah.
There we go. I'm unmuted now, okay? Aloha all. And actually, it is so wonderful to be back in Kohala. Yes, back in Havi after almost 10 years on the mainland. So I raised my children here. They went to Parker School. I danced in North Kohala in Hala'ohalele'a. And in general, had experienced the Kahilo Theater as somebody who went there with my kids. And so I know that it's the heartbeat and the heartbeat of this community. And this makes me especially excited about the programs we're doing for young people. And during this time, when it's so difficult and challenging, we're actually developing new ways of engaging youth. And so as the spotlight on a nonprofit this week, we would like to ask your support in our youth and education programs. If you go to the kahiluthater.org website and click on support, any donation you make will go to help our keke have arts experiences. So someone made this lovely sign for me, www.kahiluthater.org/support. One of the reasons I was excited about taking on this position, besides being back home again and working in the arts, is that we are doing virtual programming, and that's very exciting. And we're doing it like very few organizations are even attempting around the country. I'd like to introduce to you someone you probably already know, Chuck Essert, to talk about what I'm very excited about, and I hope you will all subscribe to Kahilu TV. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, and welcome to Kahilo Theater. Why, this is, as Sherman said, a most trying time. And for me especially, I feel that Kahilo Theater is the community hub of our community. It's our gathering place. It's where we can all gather and have shared experiences, where our hearts start pounding as one. And in every single performance and activity that we have at Kahilo, people walk out of the theater saying, "That was the best performance I've ever had, ever seen." And of course, we know that that's because the heart then went up into the brain and said, released all these endorphins and said, "Ah." And so what our industry and what our community is missing right now is that chance to gather as community. And so early on, actually, four years ago when I got here, I thought, you know, we need to figure out a way to capture all this great art by video. And, you know, one thing led to another, and we were just all so busy that we never got around to that. But with the closing in March due to the pandemic, I started researching how we can create some magic online. And with the board's support, after several months of research and development, we invested in an online platform called kahilu.tv. And just a few hours ago, we received word that our app, we have an app for Android and for Apple phones that is kahilu.tv. So people can view what's happening at Kahilo on their phones. And in about a month, we're going to have apps for Roku as well as Amazon Fire, so that it makes it very easy to share aloha all around the world via mobile devices and TV. And what is that content going to be? We are positioning ourselves as your source for Hawaiian music and culture. So not only are we going to be serving our local community with live entertainment, recorded content, as well as free content, we are going to be able to spread aloha throughout the world. And I, you know, I don't know about you, but I don't pay that much attention to the news, but everyone tells me how bad it is out there. And I think it's our, you know, obligation and our duty to spread aloha throughout the world. And we have such talent here on the big island and in Hawaii that we're going to be showcasing musical art, performance art, and as well as halau and stuff that we haven't even, you know, imagined yet on this kahilu.tv platform. So go and your app store and download the app. Now it's free. We've got subscription packages. And just to explain real quickly, our subscription packages help pay for the platform, the Kahilu TV platform. We do pay-per-view concerts, which are live events. This Saturday, we have Kalani Pay, a two-time Grammy Award winner from Hilo. We'll be doing a live pay-per-view concert. Our pay-per-views help us pay for the artists, help get some money into their pockets, and they haven't had really revenue since March. And then we have free content that is specifically designed to spread that aloha for free, and you can share that content with all your friends and family. So thanks for the opportunity to share. It's just, I was saying right before we started, this marks my, it was exactly four years ago this week that I attended my first Waimea Community Association meeting. And I'm not graduating or going away. So aloha, and it's great to be here.
Thank you so much, Chuck, and thank you, Sherman, and welcome, Sarah. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and being a part of our community here. I encourage you all, viewers out there, to visit kahiluthater.org and check out the Kahilo Theater TV app. It's a wonderful experience there. So please go out there and enjoy it, enjoy it. So thank you so much from our Kahilo team there. Wonderful news. As we move, and I'm going to move up a little bit the agenda here a little bit to give Senator Noe a little time here. So I'm going to move to our main portion of tonight's meeting, and then I'll intersperse some other community announcements shortly after. But I would encourage our viewers, as we move to the main portion of tonight's meeting, to submit any questions that they have for our elected officials and elected leaders on the Facebook chat, and we can share them with our speakers during the Q&amp;A session here at the end. We are giving each of our elected leaders here an opportunity to share with us their goals and their priorities for the year ahead. This will be a challenging year on many fronts, and we are grateful for their leadership this evening and help guide us through these difficulties ahead. So to begin, I'd like to welcome Senator Lorraine Noe, who represents Hawaii Senate District 4. She is also the chair of the Senate Water and Land Committee and also vice chair of the Transportation Committee. So Senator, the floor is yours. I'll make sure you're unmuted there.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Aloha, everyone. It's so great to see some of you that we haven't seen for a while since we're all been cooped up and the holidays came along. But at this time, I'd like to say thank you and mahalo to Sherry and those at the Police Department for all the challenges that you've been experiencing during the holidays and with COVID, but that you continue to serve our communities. And we're so blessed to have all of you and give my regards to all of you at the station. And welcome, Sarah, back to Hawaii. We're happy to see that you've joined Kahilo Theater. Certainly, it's good to see you back in Hawaii and back into our great district as well. James did highlight some of my coverages over here at the Senate. I'm at the Capitol, so I'm working. I'm a member of the Ways and Means, which is the Money Committee in the Senate. And so that benefits our communities as well, and in particular, my district. But at this time, I do want to say all of my mahalos to Parker Ranch. We've just completed the purchase and all the things that we needed to do to hand over the $1.2 million to Parker Ranch for the acquisition of the parking lot for our middle school and the elementary school. And thanks to Representative Tarnas as well for helping when he came on as the representative to continue to make sure that this project survives. And so we're so happy. We took pictures, and it's finally in the hands of the school. And so now we look forward in the coming years to see how the community and all of us here at the Capitol as well, how we're going to raise monies to make, to at least pave the parking lot. So that's going to be challenging. We need partnerships that will be needed in the coming years. I do want to say again our contribution to the Waimea. One of my community membership at the Waimea Nature Park, managed by the Outdoor Circle in Waimea. We've also completed the transaction. They got the monies for our parking lot. We're going to have a paved parking lot at the Ululaa, the nature park. And so we're looking forward to groundbreaking soon. And so that's a big project that has been on my books for the last several years. I do want to say that we haven't started the session yet. We go into session between all of us here that represents a district. We start the session on January 20th on Wednesday. But I'm here for this entire week, for the next two weeks before session starts, because we have been interviewing all the agencies. And so I'm happy to report, at least we did hear from the Department of Agriculture today that there is a benefit for Waimea in this year's budget, that the Department of Agriculture is completing the monies that we have funded for our Kamauela vacuum cooling plant. And so you haven't seen some activities for several years now, but finally, all the plans and designs, the Department of Agriculture is completing the construction of the photovoltaic system at the plant. And, you know, the energy cost to run the refrigeration units and the cooling chambers has been a burden, you know, to the co-op farmers. And this project includes the construction of the additional 65 kW energy system with a battery backup as well, so, and a new carport structure. And so we're happy that we're moving along with the vacuum cooling plant master plan. And so this year's budget will be giving them, at least for the cooling plant, $750,000. And we also have other projects that come to about $2 million. And to add to it, we're continuing to make improvements to the Waimea irrigation system of $500,000. So we're having a little bit of a share of community CIPs for the district. And just to tell you that we won't be having, because of the shortfall this year, there will be no grants in AIDS, unfortunately, for the next several years. And at least we've had contributed, and our Kahilo Theater has been part of our grants in aid program years passed. And so, you know, we were happy to have contributed to that project. But unfortunately, going forward for the next couple of years, our granted aid programs will be zeroed out, including future capital improvements as well. And so we're, as I did mention, it's too early to talk about what myself as senator for the district with regards to bills, because we're not in session yet. And so I won't be able to share with you what's before our committee in water, land, as well. But we'll continue to do improvements and the finalization of our transportation plan that you in the community have been coming to our meetings in Waimea. That's moving along as well. However, I do want to say that, you know, it's so important that we continue, though, to make improvements that has to do with education and to our schools. You know, we do have some commitments that we've tried to assist. As an example, our charter schools, Kanu Charter School, has been without their certified kitchen yet. But hopefully that I can, between David and I, Rep. Tarnas and I, can find some monies, at least to make sure that if we can find some monies this year to include them so they can complete their certified kitchen. And so it's just something that we do have to do for our students. We want them to have good, fresh meals and also to use the certified kitchen for our communities as well. So having said that, I thank all of you for the good work you do for the community. I'll be there with you in the next several hearings, in your community meetings as well. forthcoming, after the session starts, then we can say, okay, these are the bills. That's where that's coming before the committee or what affects our state in general. But having said that, we will join you folks and James in your future meetings and Patty when we start session. And so having said that, I will leave you. I have an important meeting that I'm being called to. I'm already 15 minutes late. But I thank you, and I'm sorry I'm not going to be with you folks for the rest of tonight's meeting. But then, thanks again, and happy new year to all of you.
Thank you so much, Senator. All the best to you, and thank you so much for your hard work at the Capitol over there. Have a good evening. Don't stay up too late. I'm going to jump back before we welcome some of our next guests for the main portion of the evening. I'm going to jump back to some community announcements I'd like to share with all of our viewers out there. First of all, next week, Tuesday, which will be January 12th at 10:00 a.m., the Hawaii Food Basket will be holding their next Ohana food drop here in Waimea at the Waimea District Park. And on that note, we also want to thank all of the community-driven food programs powered by many of the volunteers and donors that are helping our community weather this pandemic. I'm just going to share my screen for the next one here. But let's see, so next actually is a new event that's happening here in the community. This is Anna Wrench's First Food Truck Friday, and this will be happening tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon. The flyer show is 3:00 p.m. It starts and it goes till 8:00 p.m. This is a nice way to celebrate the end of the week. So this is a new event that's happening here in the community, kind of a food truck event. Please enjoy. Remember to follow guidelines, COVID safety guidelines there, and enjoy the festivity there. The next one is kind of an overall statement here, and this has been shared out by a number of our representatives and legislators. And this particular flyer here is about vaccine scams. But also want to thank you, our viewers and fellow community members, for continuing to do your part in preventing the spread of COVID-19 by wearing masks, practicing good physical distancing, and avoiding large gatherings and overall helping to maintain a lower rate of infection in our communities here. So please be aware of the continued COVID scams, especially as they relate to the vaccine. This information and the warning has been shared out by our state and county officials and legislators. So please continue to do your part for the health and safety of our community and our loved ones. This is our kulianna, and we hope that you will consider being vaccinated when the opportunity is presented to you. So mahalo. And at this point, I'm going to jump back. And at this point, I'm gonna jump back to our, our main presenters there. And we're gonna go to our Representative, uh, Mark Nakashima, who represents House, uh, House District 1. And he also chairs the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. So, welcome Representative Nakashima, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I'll make sure you're unmuted there.
Always forgetting to unmute. Um, thank you, James, and, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, this year I, um, moved to the, uh, Chair of the House Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. And so it's, um, a shift from where I've been the last several years as Vice Speaker, where I, uh, served in, uh, more leadership role. And now, um, taking on the, um, Judiciary Committee, uh, does present some challenges this coming year. You know, um, back in, uh, November during the general election, we all kinda waited up to 10 o'clock as the polls closed at like 10:00 PM because of the lines, um, at the Voter Assistance Center. And, uh, part of the reason for that is because, um, we put a lot of requirements on the county, uh, to host a Voter Assistance Center. And so it's not kind of in, it's kind of not in their interest to have more than the two that we created. And so I'm thinking about creating another level of, um, uh, opportunity where we, uh, create, um, just, uh, uh, additional, uh, polling sites that, um, will, uh, allow them to not be, not necessarily have them open for the full 10 days, uh, but just on the Election Day. And that may, uh, help, um, alleviate some of the crowding, um, at, at the one facility, at the two facilities that are, that are open. And then, uh, provide an opportunity for those that need to vote on, um, Election Day or those need to register, uh, to vote on the same day. Uh, have that opportunity in, uh, multiple locations on the island in addition to just, uh, uh, two voter centers that we currently allow. Uh, another thing that's coming up, uh, because of the pandemic is that, you know, meetings like this are becoming more and more commonplace. However, uh, the Sunshine Law does not really allow meetings, uh, in this manner in the way that we have been doing them. And, uh, you know, Hawaii County, uh, with its, uh, Hilo and Kona site, ha- has been doing it for a while, but the rest of us have all just been getting together in rooms and just meeting in one place. And so now as we meet by Zoom, um, you know, one of the requirements of, of the Sunshine Law is every place that a participant is, is actually supposed to be open to the public. So if you're sitting in your living room and, and participating in a, in a meeting as a member of the board, um, technically, you're supposed to let people into your house and let them be there as well with you. And so we're, uh, changing the, uh, law to allow for these remote sites to occur and not have it to be, uh, necessarily open to the public. However, we are now, we're going to require that, uh, one of the, that the, um, the Board or Commission, whoever is holding the meeting, to, uh, provide a site that the public can participate from, uh, in the meetings. And so, you know, that's, that's gonna be a change we'll be looking at, uh, this coming, um, session, uh, in the Judiciary Committee, uh, to mod, to update the Sunshine Law to kind of make it, make the things that we are doing now, okay, uh, for the rest of, for, um, for the future. Um, the other thi- the other, uh, area of my committee is Hawaiian Affairs and, you know, uh, the Department of Fine Home Lands, uh, has, has been under, uh, a lot of criz- criticism for its, um, in, uh, difficulty in really feeling, um, putting the, uh, beneficiaries onto the land. And so we've been working with them to see how, how we might, uh, uh, speed that up. One of the things that they have come out with from their side to, uh, that they feel will help them, uh, put more beneficiaries on the land is by, uh, allowing gaming, uh, in, uh, West Hawaii. And so you're, uh, West Oahu, I'm sorry, not West Hawaii, West Oahu. And so, you know, that's one of the things that we're looking at, uh, that we'll be looking at, uh, for the future. But I see my time is up, so aloha.
Representative, you still have a little time if you'd like to take some more, you know, about five minutes if you'd like some more.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought that was like... Okay, the, the final thing I'll mention is that, um, you know, there has been quite a bit of criticism about, um, having the legislature come in, uh, in special session to try and deal with, uh, some of the, um, pandemic-related, uh, violations that, um, have been cited. And, um, right now, under the, um, Governor's, uh, Special Powers, the violations that are cited are all misdemeanors. And so they require that, um, you adjudicate, that you have to go to court to deal with those, uh, tickets that you're getting. And one of the things we're looking at is to change the level of, um, violation to one similar, uh, instead of being a misdemeanor, changing it to be more like a traffic fine. So, you know, if you do get a ticket, you can just, uh, take care of it by, uh, writing a check, uh, to pay your fine and be done with, uh, be done with the violation. And so, uh, that is something else that we will be, um, looking at, uh, coming, uh, session.
Thank you so much, Representative. Appreciate you joining us here tonight and your updates there. Um, so at this point, I'd like to welcome our next representative, Representative David Tarnas. Uh, Representative Tarnas also is a Chair of one of our committees at the, the House level. Uh, Representative Tarnas is a Chair of the House Water and Land Committee. So thank you so much, Representative Tarnas. Representative District 7, thank you.
Thank you, James. I appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening and aloha to everyone. Happy New Year. I get to, uh, the responsibility this session to serve as the Chair of the Water and Land Committee. It's a, uh, a big responsibility and, uh, and I'm, I'm grateful for it. And so I'm actually the counterpart in the House to the Committee Chair position that our Senator Inouye has in the Senate. So we're working closely together to prepare legislation that we're going to be offering, uh, when we start, uh, the session in just a couple of weeks. And it's very beneficial to me because I've worked with Senator Inouye for many, many years. And, uh, we represent the same district. And so I think we have a lot of the same values, the same priorities. And so I, I'm grateful for this collaborative, collaborative spirit that, uh, we can bring to our work. This is especially important this session because, uh, the way we're gonna run the legislature this session is that finally, everyone will have the opportunity to give remote testimony. So you will be able to follow all of our work at the legislature through the legislative website, the capital.hawai.gov. And, uh, as I've mentioned before, when you can just, uh, sign up and, uh, uh, sign up an account and identify the committee that you're interested in, you'll get an email every time that committee has a hearing. If you have certain bills that you're interested in, you can just identify that bill, flag that bill, and then you will get, uh, email every time that bill is up for a hearing or has some action taken on it. When a bill is up for a hearing, you'll be able to go to the website and present your written testimony as you have done in the past. There will also be a new option that if you can just click on a box saying you want to give oral testimony. And by doing that, you will then get a Zoom invitation before the hearing starts. And then you will be able to join the hearing and, uh, up, and then you'll be able to give your testimony via Zoom. And as usual, after everyone gives their testimony, the Chair would, uh, offer the opportunity for the members to ask questions of each of the, uh, testifiers. So, you know, I've talked about this before, uh, over the years, trying to get the legislature to pass legislation or change the rules to allow remote testimony. Finally, we're able to do that, it's a silver lining from, uh, this pandemic that, uh, the legislature has really been forced to allow remote testimony. So that means to give testimony, all of you don't have to fly over to Honolulu and give oral testimony. You can do it from your own home. And so that's, uh, one of the few silver linings that we have from this pandemic. I urge you, if you haven't already, sign up for my newsletter. I send out a regular electronic newsletter, a regular e-newsletter every couple of weeks. And, uh, I urge you to, to sign up for it. You can just, uh, call my office or send me an email and I'll sign you up right away. And, uh, and I will be explaining to everyone through the newsletter how to go about being involved in the legislature. The legislature i- is really, uh, better if we get input from our constituents. So your testimony helps us do a better job. So I really urge you to get involved, track the bills that you're interested in, testify on them. You know, call us at the legislature, send us emails. Remember, we work for you. So I really encourage you to be actively involved and it really does help us do a better job. Uh, I'd like to give you just a couple of updates on things, uh, as Senator Inouye mentioned. We haven't started the legislature yet, we're gonna be opening on, uh, January 20th. And so we are all preparing bills right now, uh, to introduce. Um, but there's some updates that Senator Inouye has already mentioned and I would like to provide just a few others about projects that we have started already. We funded in the past and we're moving forward with now. Uh, the Senator mentioned the Waimea Outdoor Circle Project, which is actually a, a paved road, the entry road going in there, uh, will now be able to be paved. Thank you to Waimea Outdoor Circle and their efforts, uh, and their diligence to actually make this happen. So that's gonna be moving forward. Uh, Waimea Elementary School, we were just able to release funds for, uh, long-needed repair on one of their classroom roofs. There's still lots more work that needs to be done at this aging facility, but that is finally moving forward. The Waimea Middle School, uh, um, steam building, the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math, uh, building, uh, is getting some additional improvements to improve its, uh, uh, ability to weather our Waimea, uh, rains, uh, so that we won't have, uh, damage to the building. Thank you, James. I'll make sure I finish up. Uh, I, um, so, so we are moving forward on that as well, because i- it's so important that we, uh, support our schools. One of the other projects that the funding to Waimea Middle School will allow them to do is to, uh, update its communication system. So it's the communication system, uh, on the campus, uh, uh, which is gonna be really important to, uh, uh, especially these days where you need to have good broadband, uh, good internet connection to make things work. This has been an extremely challenging time during the pandemic. A lot of the effort during the recess that my office and I have spent is to assist our residents, our constituents with, uh, challenges that they face in getting unemployment insurance benefits, whether you're, were a former employee or you were an independent contractor, because the federal government was providing some assistance to those who are independent contractors. But it's been a real challenge, there's been a big backlog, and so we've done everything we can to try to assist you. And if you still are having challenges, I urge you to contact me, contact Senator Inouye, and we'll do everything we can to assist you to move forward. Um, but, uh, we still have a ways to go. Vaccination plan is, uh, now rolling out. Uh, if you're over 80 years old, I urge you to contact your primary care physician and let them know that you are eager to get your vaccination and get your name on the list so that you will be able to be contacted as soon as the vaccine arrives at your, uh, facility, at your primary care physician's facility, so that you can get your vaccine. Those of us who are younger than 80 years old will be coming soon, uh, will be able to get our, our vaccination soon. And I urge you, get your vaccination as soon as that opportunity is there. I know there's folks out there that don't trust the vaccine. I do trust the vaccine, uh, and I think I really urge you to, uh, to get the vaccination. It will not only protect you, it will protect your loved ones and your family, all of your neighbors and friends, and, uh, it will help our community as a whole. Um, if you have questions about it, you certainly contact me. I'll put you in touch with the Department of Health and the medical professionals so that they can answer your questions. Uh, I understand some may be skeptical, but I really urge you to trust this and get your vaccination. It's really important. A couple of other projects I want to mention, uh, we're still working on the purchase of the land for the Waikoloa Library. It's proving to be a little challenging because of unexploded ordinance. That's a topic we're very familiar with in Waimea. Um, so we're still working on that, it's not quite finished yet. The two major road projects, the Saddle Road Extension Project and the Waimea Regional Safety Improvement Projects, both of those were funded by the legislature, but the funding is based on revenue bonds that are financed by the rental car surcharge. As you know, not a lot of people are renting cars. And so we're not getting a lot of money into the rental car surcharge, uh, fund. And so we're gonna need to delay those projects for a little while, while we, uh, get our tourism sector back up and running and people renting cars again, so that we can float those bonds and finance those projects. Puakoe Waste Water Collection System, uh, is a project that i- is, uh, ready to move forward under the new county administration. I've met with the new mayor and he's eager to move forward with that. And our county council representatives, uh, Richards and Kimball, uh, I know are very, uh, uh, will be, will, will be important allies as we move forward on that project as well. Uh, up in Kohala, our Polulu, uh, Trailhead Parking Lot and improvements for the pedestrian, uh, access to the Trailhead. Uh, I'm eager to have that move forward, but that's really contingent upon a, uh, private, uh, proposal from Surety to do a consolidation re-subdivision, uh, that is pending with the county. Um, I have urged Surety to reach out to the community to make sure everyone really understands what this whole project is. But from the state's perspective, we're eager and we, I have encouraged that we, um, issue this, uh, uh, letter of intent to, uh, participate in that, because Surety has offered to give us five acres to be able to build a parking lot. And the consolidation re-subdivision, uh, uh, re-subdivision on the valley floor, in some, I think, will benefit our community and benefit the environment. And so I understand there's concerns about the, uh, consolidation re-subdivision, but I really, uh, urge the community to reach out to Surety and, uh, reach out to the state so that you understand the big picture, because I think in total, some, it's gonna be beneficial to us. Um, I'll come back to you next month or at our next opportunity with the, uh, Community Association to update you on the, the many bills that we will be considering, those that are particular interest in Water, Land Committee. But, uh, I will leave that to a future meeting when we will have those bills that are actually pending before us after we've introduced them. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Again, Happy New Year to everybody. And, uh, I'll turn it back to you, James. Aloha.
Mahalo, Representative Tarnas. Thank you so much. Uh, appreciate your time with us here this evening and giving us a number of updates. Grateful to hear from you. Thank you so much. Um, for our next guest, I'd actually like to welcome our newly-elected Office of Hawaiian Affairs Trustee, Killa Lindsay, representing Ahoi Island here. Welcome, Killa. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, thanks for the great work of the Waimea Community Association. Um, you know, when our friends were talking about Kahilo Theater, it kind of took me on a walk down memory lane. Um, when, at the time, the newly-constructed Kahilo Theater, they would walk all those kids from Waimea Elementary over. Um, I don't think the post office was there. And Richard, uh, Mr. And Richard, Mr. Smart, Richard Smart, would put on these great performances for us at the theater. And at the time, you know, we didn't know what a privilege it was to see these performances. And we were kind of a wild bunch. And Mr. Smart would scold us. He would tell us, hey, if you don't settle down, I'm going to talk to your parents. And he knew most of our parents. So that kind of got us kind of straightened out, but thank you to the folks at Kahilo Theater. And I just thought I'd share that a little memory that popped into my head as they were talking. In terms of OHA's state level policy priorities in the upcoming legislative session, each year OHA submits a legislative package for consideration. I won't go into like a lot of detail on it, but it is up on our website for folks that might be interested. www.oha.org. I think it's right there, front and center when you when you go on. We have three bills and a resolution this year. But beyond the specific package we have, we have a public policy team that monitors all of the bills that that go forward to our senators and representatives and the OHA board actually establishes a position on each of those bills and then submits testimony accordingly. So OHA's board meeting schedule and committee meeting schedule will be starting up very soon. We have our first board meeting of the year next week, Thursday, a week from today. And then soon thereafter, we'll be taking a look at all the bills that have been proposed after the legislature starts on January 20th and reviewing those each week and taking positions on them. OHA's board meetings are also virtual. And if you want more information on that, how to submit testimony, how to participate or or watch the live stream that we have, that information is up on our website as well. org. And I think there's a BOT tab that you can drop down and pull up and take a look at. There's information again about how to participate. The schedule is up. I don't think we're we're as advanced as the legislature is at this point with the overview Representative Tarnas gave in being able to monitor the different bills and get notifications. But we're also trying to make OHA accessibly accessible remotely for everyone. And just to touch on beyond the state level policies, because OHA also deals with federal policies and one thing I hope to do is increase our relationship at the county level on Hawaii Island with, of course, our council members that are with us tonight and in the county administration overall. But our we have a federal team. We have staff in Washington DC monitoring the federal level activities. You know, and bringing forth different measures that Congress is considering for our board to be aware of. And we don't take a position on every measure before Congress, but we do take positions on certain ones that have impact to our beneficiaries and our interests. As I'm settling into my role as as the Hawaii Island trustee, I've asked my staff to help me gain more familiarity and awareness with Hawaii Island specific activities, particularly the OHA grant funding and OHA loan funding that's going out to our Hawaii Island community. You know, I know each year we're wrapping up the current biennial cycle for our grants and we'll be starting another one in July. So I want to become more familiar with that to know exactly how OHA's grant funding and loans are impacting Hawaii Island community and of course, any that are focused in on on the Waimea, Kohala and Hamakua areas to make sure we're helping folks as much as we can. And I think we all know it's a tough economic time and a tough time. Safety wise, with everyone being very concerned about the pandemic that that's still impacting everyone's lives very severely. But I know folks have started coming out with information about how businesses have been affected, how we can recover from that. Over the summer, OHA was a part with the Lillio Kalani Trust and Kamauia Schools and working with the Native Hawaiian Chamber of Commerce, including the Hawaii Island branch of it to kind of conduct a survey to understand how folks are being impacted. I'd like to see, you know, more of that kind of work continue for, you know, the long term recovery so that we have good data and information from the people affected the most to try to affect change, whether it's through policy or funding. Also, you know, with the Hawaii Tourism Authority kind of rebranding and kind of reshaping itself with Mr. John DeFreeze, who's from the Kona side, kind of taking the leadership around there. I hope OHA and myself as the Hawaii Island trustee can strengthen the relationship, you know, there, to really start getting an idea of what what, you know, that industry looks like, you know, moving forward. So I'm two months into this role. It's a great honor. I I look forward to working with everyone. I'm learning a lot. I still have, you know, a lot to learn. And hopefully, in in future meetings, if the association will have me again, I'll have more specific information about, you know, and the work OHA is doing rent wise, bill wise, loan wise, not only on Hawaii Island, but in our area specifically. Thanks again.
Mahalo, Killa. Thank you so much. Happy New Year to you. Thank you so much for stepping into this role and supporting our communities. Thank you. And next, I'd like to move on to actually our county council members here. So I'm going to start off with Councilmember Tim Richards, who represents Council District Nine here. Councilmember Richards is also, he chairs the Renderegenerative Agriculture, Water, Energy and Environmental Management Committees. So thank you, Council Richards.
Aloha, everyone. Thanks, James. Thanks for the inclusion on this. And again, really appreciate kicking this off and getting a good start. Great to see a lot of my friends out there, Representative Nakashima Tarnas. Great to see you. I'm very happy to welcome Councilmember Kimball, who joins us and we'll get to her in just a few minutes. If you want to meet the new people you're working with, just have legislation coming hard and fast right at you out of the block. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Trustee Lindsay, very happy to have you on this call and look forward to talking story with you and being able to work with you because I think there's a lot of synergy that we can seek with each other and going forward. So with that, I'm glad Senator Rain was on. Always great to hear from her. Sorry she had to step out, but that we all have obligations and while I'm sitting here listening to people, my phone's going off and I'm dealing with my office. And I think everybody on this call is doing exactly the same thing. So with that, again, Waimea Community Association, thanks for hosting this forum. First and foremost, we have a new mayor. We have a new administration. We have new directors coming in. And I'm going to start out by saying we are hitting the road fast and furious as we're going through the approval process, the confirmation for the cabinet of the mayor. Mayor Roth has introduced quite a array of people coming in and he he did a island wide search north, south, east, west, looking for people to fill those directorships. And we have been going very hard. I think Tuesday, Heather, we were in council for what, eleven hours or something like that? Going through the the process of reviewing this through committee and then they'll go to full council for approval. Some of them were simple. Some of them were a little challenging. Some of them were a little contested at times. The probably the biggest take home with all of this, I'd like to say is that we need to give this administration, they're just getting started. They're hitting it hard. They're hitting it fast, but they're just coming along right now and understanding a lot of things. To that end, I want to talk a little bit about the directors. As was mentioned, part of my committee is environmental management. On that committee, we have a new director, Ramsey Monsur. And Ramsey comes to us from Honolulu, where he was a director of wastewater before he was in Kern County, California. Again, wastewater and solid waste. He is, I would definitely consider an expert all in wastewater. And so Rep. Tarnas, well, we talked specifically about Puakoa and the challenges facing us going forward. The money, yes, we're figuring out what the best way to handle this is. But we have a wastewater specialist on this island to help us now. And I think we need to listen very carefully. We had some great brainstorming ideas. That was another one. To meet your new directors, all you have to do is have a bunch of legislation that is a little problematic coming forth. We've gotten to know each other quite well in the last two weeks, and I think he's going to bring a lot of good insight and input for us for Puakoa. And so I look forward to working with him on all of that. Considering the county as a whole, Rep. Nakashima mentioned this, we have a challenge. We have a problem with our budgets. And that's going to be a challenge going forward. Best estimate for the economy and tourism for this island, that's about forty percent of our economy. So for about six months, we lost about forty percent of that economy. We're starting to see a reawakening of that, but that is posing a challenge. Rep. Tarnas mentioned the funding for the road projects that came out of the rental cars. We have the half percent GE tax surcharge that we get for use in our roads. But again, our economy has been so sluggish that we haven't seen the revenue stream coming forth there. So some of our projects are stalled, I think is a good way to describe those. We are looking forward going and seeing a way we can open things up. This mayor is very proactive. And you're going to see a different communication style out of this administration. Mitch is very intent on communicating to the community, to the group, working with county council. We're going to see a lot more open communication. It is a, I won't say an edict, but it's sure an expectation that his directors get out of their offices and get out into the community. So we will be seeing our directors come out. We already have things set up for Kohala. We'll get some things set up for Waimea for some of the directors to come out and talk story. The new director designated for Public Works, Ikaike Rodenhurst. For some of you who've been around Kohala a long time, you'll recognize the last name Rodenhurst. It was Ikaike's great grandfather that worked for Kohala Sugar back in the day. And so that's where I recognize the name coming forth. Ikaike is pushing hard and trying to get things done as far as learning what the needs are. We did discuss the Waikoloa escape route that we have down in Waikoloa Village, and he'll be looking into that. We talked about the resurfacing of the, thank you, James. We will be having the resurfacing of the Paniolo Avenue that is forthcoming, that is funded. We have the funding there. We will be having the Waikoloa Road from the mountain, excuse me, from the Mauna Road down to Queen Kei that will be resurfaced, that is high on the STIP list and is expected to be resurfaced sometime in the first quarter of this year. So that those things are coming along. I guess the big question for me is what am I going to be working on and what are my focuses? Hasn't changed. As long as you've known me, as long as I've been in office, agriculture is the overarching drive and what gets me up in the morning and I keep pushing for that. There's a great desire for food self-reliance, food security, characterized as how you want to. It doesn't really matter. But we'll be driving to push that agriculture agenda going forward. Again, affordable housing has to be part of the conversation. Absolutely has to be. And I know I can work with my counterparts in the legislature to to keep pushing for that affordable housing. Again, overall, we're all concerned about the economy. I know the legislature is hit in their budget. We're going to be hitting our budgets. But I think there's some policy things that we can work on, though they won't cost really that much money, but we can come up with some good policy. Rep. Tarnas and I talked about access to some of the hiking things along those lines. Councilwoman Kimball and I have been working on the YPO access, which a unintended consequence of perhaps shutting down YPO for hiking would impact Polulu and Rep. Tarnas mentioned that. So there's a greater conversation to have. And this is something I think that we as council and the state need to get together and have this conversation, figure out how we're going to have the access coming forth. Trustee Lindsay, I think you should be part of those conversations as well because I'm sure we're going to have crossover on this. So again, approach things with a cohesive and a collaborative and put everybody at the table. We may have a lot of good ideas come up when doing so. One of the things I did want to touch on was what's something that Dave mentioned, Rep. Tarnas, about the vaccination coming forth, COVID-19 vaccination. We are looking like there is starting to be a glimmer at the end of this tunnel. We have to keep up with our social distancing and hygiene. We have to do that, but as the vaccine comes forth, encourage people to use the vaccine. It came through, but this is looking to be very good science. And as soon as I can, I'm going to get vaccinated. And I think that we as a leadership for our communities have to set the stand and go forward. So I have to echo what Rep. Tarnas said about that. We do need to get vaccinated going forward. So with that, I think I'm running out of my time. Looks like I have about a minute left according to my timer. I'm not getting the hook from James as of yet. But again, I appreciate this. Thank you so much. I look forward to this next council. I look forward to working with Councilwoman Kimball as we dived into it hard and furious. And we'll be reaching out to you, trustee Lindsay. My office is going to be calling yours so we can set up a top story. With that, James, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thanks again for the invite and look forward to this next council.
Mahalo, councillor. Thank you so much. And at this point, you know, last but not least, I'd like to welcome our newly elected councillor from District One, Councilmember Heather Kimball. And Heather is also chairs the Governmental Operations Committee. So thank you so much, councillor, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, James. And thank you to the Board of the Waimea Community Association for putting this on tonight and inviting me to to join. And and thank you to the Kahilo Theater folks. I'm very excited to check out your app. The last time I was up there for a performance was when you brought Ira Flato over for Science Friday, and I'm totally a fangirl for Ira. So I hope that you will bring him back again. We have so much wonderful science going on on this island. We deserve a little more coverage. So I I hope that happens when we can all get back together again. We are, I have to say, just right off the gate, I'm so honored and so grateful to have the opportunity to do this job. I feel a little bit like the dog that caught the car. It has been just a flood of of information coming and it's been long days, active days every day, but I I love every minute. And so I'm so grateful that you guys have given me this opportunity to serve. I have great staff. I have Jennifer Kagiwata is my legislative assistant. She has a lot of background writing policy, particularly around early childhood education, but she's she has developed some a great background here in some of the county level issues. And then Lopaka O'Connor is my council aide, and he is born and raised here in Onamea and native Hawaiian is his first language. So he's been helping us make sure that we're corrected all of our pronunciations and diocritical marks. So it's great to have him on board. He has a degree in economics as well, which we're hoping to put to good use. We've been using this time, we've we've been in office officially for a month as of today and using this time to really organize ourselves so that we're more efficient going forward. So we've been making sure that we've set up our entire document tracking system, ways to manage communications and emails. And we're also really focusing on, because it's been such a priority for constituents, our ability to outreach to you. And so I wanted to make sure that folks were aware that we have a Council District One Office of Heather Kimball Facebook page. Please like that so you can can follow along. We're posting up there regularly. We also have an Instagram page and then we're we have been doing a weekly newsletter with with events and things gone. So just like David Tarnas, give us a call, send us an email, heather.kimball@hawaiicounty.gov and we'll add you and we'll add you to that newsletter and make sure we're getting that information out to you. We're also starting this month, a series of drive-through talk stories. Hoping to make sure we're abiding by COVID precautions, but we want to make sure we wanted, we met you where you are. The closest one to you folks is going to be this Saturday at 1:30, we're going to be at the bus stop by Mud Lane, so so the Lakeland area. Later on, I, I hope to coordinate with Councilmember Richards to do one more in town in Waimea. We'll also be at, at the Honaka People's Theater this Saturday morning at, at 10 o'clock until 11:30. So if you want to just swing by and, and chat real quickly, we'll, we'll talk to you. Stay in your car, we'll just come up and talk to you. We'll see how this works. It's a whole new day and we're, and we're just trying to come up with creative ways to, to make sure we're out there and talking with our constituents. You know, the, the, I, I want to reiterate what, what Councilmember Richards said about where we are with the council and the new administration and, and some of these new appointments for department heads. This is going to be a very difficult time ahead of us. We know tourism is going to bounce back immediately. Our economy is not going to bounce back immediately. But at the same time, I am incredibly optimistic. We have a very forward-thinking mayor who has a lot of progressive ideas. And we also have a lot of new department heads that I think are really energized to, to look at things and say, how can we do things better? How can we do things in a different way? And Councilmember Richards mentioned Ramsey Monsur. I have never met somebody so excited about waste. But he, he is going to bring us into the 21st century when it comes to solid waste management. And, and he's, he's really energetic and enthusiastic, and I think we were all inspired by him in the committee hearing. We also have Doug Adams, who will be our head of R and D, another person that has a really broad background, a wealth of experience and just a real commitment to get things done. And so my committee, government relations and operations, will work closely with R and D in the future. Particularly around the area of economic development, and I'll, I'll speak about that a little bit more in a moment. The other department head I wanted to mention is Scott Uihara, who is the IT Director. Another person who is really taking a step back and looking at the structure of his department, the structure of the tools that they have to make sure, okay, are we really meeting the customer, you, the, the voters, the constituents? Are we really meeting your needs? And, and so I'm excited about his approach. And so far, we've had some great conversations about how to get some of the backend structure that delivers you the services of your government more organized and more efficient. We'll be working at priorities at two levels, and I kind of think of it as the swan. You know, there's going to be the stuff that you see above the water, and then we're going to be working furiously underneath the water as well. And some of that stuff that's above the water are these emergent issues, the things that come up, we have to resolve right away. We have a couple of bridge closures in the Hamakua portion of the district that we need to, to address right away, but we've got a lot of those up and down the coast. So as we doing, dealing with this particular area, you know, we're thinking long-term strategically about how we can better address the bridge situation before it's a crisis. Additionally, we have all, both the pools in Laupahoi Hoi and Honaka closed. We went up there with Parks and Rec, Maurice Messina, the new Parks and Rec Director. We thought it was not going to be possible to get these up soon, but I'm actually optimistic after our site visits that we can get things moving up there pretty quickly. As Councilmember Richard mentions, right out of the gate, I had to jump in on the YPO access issue. I think that we did the right thing, of course, by, by deferring that bill. There were legal issues with doing it, and, and we got a lot of feedback from the community that I think provided good ideas for alternatives. So I'll be working with Councilmember Richards and other members of our working group to come up with an overall strategy for management of YPO and the other surrounding valleys. If you did not see the council hearing on Bill 217, which was the pedestrian access bill, it is up on our Facebook page, so you can review that and review the comments that were made regarding access to YPO Valley. In addition to those sort of surface-level emergent issues, we're working on a couple of things behind the scenes. COVID recovery, making sure that communications about COVID are correct, current and consistent. And I want to make sure that I repeat what Representative Tarnus and, and Councilmember Richard says about the vaccine. That, that rollout is happening now. It is important that we all get vaccinated. As soon as I can do it, going to be pretty low on the list, I think, but when it's my turn, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and be right there, and I hope the rest of the community will join me in that. It's so important. Also that we continue to remain vigilant, practice social distancing, wear masks, wash our hands, use hand sanitizer, all of that. So please, I know it's been a long time, but keep up with it. We, we are doing better than most areas in the country. If we keep up with it, we will continue to be in that position. We're also looking at economic development issues, particularly around broadband. And I wanted to make sure everyone is aware that with the federal, the most recent federal dispersment related to COVID, there will be coming in a couple of months, some programs for reimbursement for broadband access. Fifty dollars, up to fifty dollars, and then in tribal lands, which DHL homelands are considered, it will be up to seventy-five dollars. So my office will stay on top of that and put out information as soon as that becomes available. We're also just looking, that, that's for people that have ability to connect to service. We're also working with the broadband Hui at the state level to, to expand access in general. And then finally, I wanted to mention, we're going to be working heavily on government transparency, which was something that came up a lot on the campaign trail. People wanted to know how their tax dollars were being used. I'm working with the mayor's office and R and D and, and IT on some surface-level applications that will allow us to look at various metrics with relationship to COVID recovery, how we're using funds and, and our general budget dispersment. So that, that will be happening pretty quickly, actually. And, and I'm excited about that. I did want to mention two more things, James, before I sign off. Senator Anoy mentioned there won't be any state-level grant funding. There is going to be some grant funding still available at the county level, and the deadline to put in your applications for that is January 29th. And you can go to that, get to that from the county webpage under the Finance Department Budget and then Nonprofits. And then I also wanted to mention, and I'm sure you guys will have the mayor, I think before this time, there is a sustainability summit planned in early March, which I think is going to be very exciting, that's going to be put on by the administration. So mark your calendars off now so that you can participate in that event. Again, wonderful to see you all. Happy New Year. Stay safe. Aloha.
Mahalo councillor, thank you so much. Appreciate you joining us this evening and appreciate all those updates. We have a little time left on our, on our schedule here, and we wanted to have a little Q and A with our, with our special guests this evening. And we're grateful for the community sending some questions at a time. So we're going to start with some of those, and if we do get some questions from our Facebook feed, we can add those in as well. So I would like to welcome in, I think Mike's here, Mike Donnelly's on the call with us here. And potentially Riley Smith will jump in as well with questions. So these questions kind of came in ahead of time, and I think they're across the board, that our representatives and our councillors and possibly our trustee here will be able to answer some of these. So Mike, I'll have you take it away when you're ready.
Thanks, James. Appreciate everybody's updates today. It was great, great seeing everybody and very useful information from the county council and our state representatives and Senator Anoy. So mahalo there. First and foremost, just one of the questions we had for perhaps Representative Tardis or Mark Nakashima is the, the COVID tracing in, in the program as tourism ramps up and we, we see them on the roads, we see them at the shopping centers now. The COVID tracing program in the state and where that's at and does it need to improve and how is it going to improve, or what are your thoughts on where we go from here?
Let me just mention that we had a hearing just, was it yesterday? Representative Nakashima, we have a committee that is specifically focusing on the pandemic and its response. And in the hearing, Representative, the Chair of the Committee, Linda Ichiyama, was describing the new COVID tracking app and program. I was going to include that in an upcoming newsletter. But I, we definitely need to improve our COVID tracking, then DOH is coming out with some apps to be able to assist with that. You know, I, I, a big shout out to our law enforcement community. They are overstretched. You can't be expecting our law enforcement to be out there tracking down people. They're too busy doing other things. And so it's personal responsibility, but we also need to be utilizing modern technology. Mark, I don't know if you've got some specifics on that. I was going to include it in a newsletter, so I don't have those at the top of my mind, but Representative Ichiyama did cover it in the hearing, so I know I'll be putting that out in a newsletter.
Yeah, same here. I, I don't have the specifics on it, but I did see the ability to put the, put the application on your phone. And the phone will then track, and you, if you've come into contact with someone else who has tested positive, then it'll give you a warning that that has happened.
And, and if I may, just up tailing that, how do you, how do you feel about the, the vaccination thus far? State perspective, the county? You know, the news peg is that it's not moving fast enough, but I, I echo David's words in terms of get the vaccine. So everybody wants to know more about how that's going to roll out.
Yeah, let me just say that we didn't get as many doses as we originally expected. And it's so, but we did get another shipment coming in in our community, North White Community Hospital has doses that are being distributed to primary care physicians. So it's starting to roll out. You're absolutely right, Mike. It's not going as quickly as we wanted it to go. And I think all of us share that frustration at its slow rollout. That being said, I urge you, if you're over eighty, call your primary care physician and get on the list and make sure they know you want that vaccination as soon as it's available so that we can get this into our community, especially for those, any of the first responders, anyone who is a frontline health worker. Anyone who is, you know, teachers, I think there's a number of different categories that are able to get the vaccine now. So I really urge you, contact your primary care physician so you can get that vaccination as soon as you can. Mark, did you have additional things to add to that?
No, that's just above covered it.
Well, thank you, representatives, and thank you, Mike. Riley, did you have a question you wanted to ask of our, our elected officials here?
Sure, James. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So you know, I think the first question that was prepared to ask council members, Richard and Kimball, was to ask you about the mayor's cabinet confirmation process, which you've kind of gone through in a lot of detail. Is there anything else that either of you wanted to add on that subject?
Heather, do you want to go first, or you want me to jump in?
I'll just mention the logistics. So the, each appointee will go through two hearings. The first was, was with the committees, which was last Tuesday. And then on the twentieth of January, they will go through the council hearing. So if there's additional testimony needed or anything like that, that can be done at council testimony at hawaiicounty.gov prior to noon on the nineteenth. There was one appointment for the planning director, which we did not hear in committee on this last Tuesday, so he will be heard in committee on the nineteenth of January.
Thanks, Heather. And just to follow up with that, interesting, Riley, your, your question, this mayor conducted his search a very unique way. He put together groups of interviewers, and he was very hands-off, so it was a very objective approach. And then those interviewing groups reviewed the candidates and then made a recommendation to the mayor. So it was a very formal process and quite involved, but also I think we got the best of the best that could be proposed to us. So I'm very much looking forward to working with these new directors. A lot of, a lot of energy, I think would be a good way to describe, don't you say, Heather, that a lot of energy and Mr. Monsur Ramsey, I tell you what, that guy, he knows what he's talking about when it comes to wastewater and, and waste management. So it, it's real interesting process.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Heather and Tim. You know, just to fully disclose, Mayor Roth had actually asked me to sit on, on a number of the interview panels. So I was in on about four of them, and I, I would concur with Tim's comments that it was totally hands-off. The panels I were on had three to four people on them. We made a recommendation. And Mitch never called anybody, pushed anybody, there was never any, anybody that had an unfair advantage. So I think it was a very open and transparent process from his side, and I would concur that he's getting the best and the brightest. So good. You know, just another opportunity, just, James, you want me to ask another question, or are you going to have things? Okay, you know, I think just a generic question. We're all in the community going through a lot of challenges. I think when you have a mayor's administration and a county council that can work together, you can accomplish a whole lot. And I think we're going to need that in order to make sure that we can recover from the challenges, you know, both at the federal, state and county level. So how can us in the community support the council members in the efforts that you're going through to be able to support our community? So what, what can we do to be involved and, and help you to be successful? Open question to either of you.
Okay, I'll, I'll jump in on this one first.
Yeah.
Okay, communication. That's a really good question. Communication, and as we all, all of the elected members here, communication, a little bit of patience as we go through this. We're dealing with things that we haven't even written the books on and how we're going to deal with that. It's my firm belief that we're going to see some relief funding coming out of Washington DC coming forth. We are going to be able to implement some of that funding. I think we have 1.75 billion coming to us now, but I believe there's going to be more funding. And having ideas from the community is great, having that outreach. For instance, what Heather and I were just working on, the YPO access, and then the impact it's going to put on Polulu, potentially. Outreach from the community, they raised some questions for us. That helps guide us going forward. So communication and communication, a little bit of patience, because this isn't going to go quickly. And so that is the biggest thing to help us right now. Communicate to us, give us your ideas, and then help us vet those things out. So Heather, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. And I, I want to share, if, if you didn't watch the, the hearings for the appointment confirmations, one of the things that Councilmember Richards asked each and one, each one of the, the appointees was, do you have shovel-ready product, projects? And, you know, I do also expect more federal funding to be coming our way, but we need to be sure that we're ready to accept it, and we have projects that we can pitch as, as opportunities for those grants. So, you know, I really view the role of, of government as, as to support the community and enable efforts of the community. And so this is the time for you to bring us ideas, for you to share us with us, your creative ventures, to get us out of the situation that we're in. And we will work on our end to try to help enable those. My door is always open, 333-1535. Give me a call. I, I'm happy to hear what, what you have to say. And I, I want to also repeat that we have a very forward-thinking administration in the mayor and his appointments. And I also think we have a doer council. I think this council will be able to work together and, and is united in wanting to make sure we get out of this and get out of this in, in even better position than before we started. So I, for one, am very optimistic about our, our possibilities going forward.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Heather. James, turn it back to you and Mike.
Sounds good. Mike, you had another question you wanted to post to everyone here?
There was a more specific question, and it's, it could be for the state representatives or the, the council members. for the state representatives or the council members, is an update on the Waikia Bridge. The feeling is that the asphalt patches are temporary fixes. And there were updates on other road and road projects. But there was a question about trying to get a status, if there was any update there.
Yeah, I can mention that the contractor, WSP, is moving ahead. I've been urging them to initiate the outreach to the community to talk about alternative designs for the intersection. If you're interested in any of these road projects, there is this great organization called the South Koala Traffic Safety Committee that has a lot of good information at each of their meetings. And it's got a great director, who's a fellow named James Houston, who will make sure that we get a lot of this information out to you. And you can actually, you know, attend it virtually through Zoom. But we are moving forward with it. The next steps are for the consultant to do community engagement, to prepare some alternative designs for that intersection. And then they have to go through a environmental analysis of those different alternatives. And I will be providing information as soon as that community engagement strategy is presented to us so that I'll put it out in the newsletter so everyone will be aware of it. And, and so it's a, it's an urgent project because those asphalt patches just don't do the job. And as we move forward, there's going to have to be some, you know, management of traffic during the construction. It's going to be a bit of a mess, but in the long run, it'll be a great improvement. So I will hopefully have more updates for you next month, if I have an opportunity to come back. But it's a very important project for the community. And I appreciate the question. I should have given you an update on that earlier, but thank you for that question, Mike.
Welcome. If I can, James, just transition to Trustee Lindsay. Just remind me if, you said this before, I apologize. But when do the meetings begin for you in this new year? And what's the, what's the priorities?
So our first board meeting of 2021 is next week, Thursday. And then we have a pretty full schedule after that. We have, also has committees, not as much as the legislature. We have two committees that are kind of basically split between our financial issues and our advocacy issues. So the legislature falls on our advocacy issues, but the committees meet every other week. So our priorities for this year are our legislative package. We have three bills and a resolution. So we hope to see those move forward successfully. But beyond that, like I said earlier, we monitor all the bills that are going to the legislature to assess their impacts on our beneficiaries. So my interest in success is passing the good ones and advocating for changes to the ones that have adverse effects, you know. And I think another priority for me on Hawaii Island is strengthening that relationship at the county level, again, with our council members and the overall county administration. I think that's something that hasn't been as strong as it could be in years past, but I think we can build on that to see a lot of good things happen at the county level. And then just see federal, as the federal administration changes up in DC and hopefully things come down and stabilize, use our DC-level staff to see benefits for our beneficiaries. So sorry, we're kind of short on time, but.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you.
Riley, do you have one more question?
Well, you know, I didn't have any other county questions, but I did have a question for Kiola as I was listening to him speak. And I appreciate all his connections to the community. And you're, how long you've been in and around Waimea? And you just know the whole community well. So Kiola, one of the questions that my wife and I always mention as we go to the transfer station on a somewhat regular basis is the Lalameal project there that has the sign that was put up probably 12 years ago from Governor Abercrombie. Is there any update on those lots and awarding and all that? I mean, you know, I know you're just getting into it, but you've been a staff member. So anything you can add to that? Because it's just kind of frustrates every time I look at that, and I'm sure to you too.
Yeah, I mean, over the years, I've noted, I've noticed the delay as well. And they seem to have made progress, and then things kind of stopped for a while. I guess the short answer is, Riley, is I don't have any specifics on what the situation is. Of course, I hear things, you know, in the community about what's going on, but I wouldn't, you know. Maybe at the next meeting, I can give more information and we can get some info from DHHL or things like that. You know, I don't, I don't want to speak off the wall, that's not.
Sure. No, absolutely. Want it to be factual. So let us know how we can help.
Yes, I can try to find more information. And the next time I come back to the association meeting, maybe I can provide a more specific update on that project.
Okay. Mahalo, Kiola.
And I'll jump in with one more question here before we close tonight. And this is kind of geared towards, a number of our representatives can jump in here, I guess, and as well as our counselors too. This concern just comes from the community about helicopters and helicopter noise. There is, just for context, there is a Board of Land and Natural Resource Meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM regarding, regarding some of this issue of paradise helicopters. And so the question is to, what are your comments or observations on paradise helicopters having a ticket counter at Waimea Airport? Are there any concerns that more helicopter tour traffic and the impact of noise in our communities?
You know, I would say that as long as they're not flying over residential areas and they honor those commitments not to fly too low, you know, I can see why people would want to have that opportunity to fly helicopters. It's an important business, and Waimea Airport is underutilized. But I do think that we need to pay attention that there isn't excessive noise over residential areas. And that's, that's a very important consideration. There has been problems in the past, and I know communities that have expressed those concerns. So as long as they follow the rules and they don't fly too low over residential areas and they follow the rules about when they can fly, you know, I'd like to see Waimea Airport used more fully because it is really underutilized. That's just my view, though. James, I'll jump in on this one as well. I agree exactly what Dave just talked about. I've got to follow the rules, and noise is a concern. This has been raised in other areas on this island, actually areas in the state, areas in the nation. So noise is a big concern. That being said, the Waimea Airport is underutilized. That is one of the designated with essential air service. We have a contract with the federal government that they pay 95% of that funding to the tune of approximately $400,000. The county kicks in about $20,000. We are working on a project, and I think Senator Ring has been able to get, help get this done. I was able to get the funding for the last three years to keep that contract in place, to keep the flights coming in there. But that being said, if we don't have a volume coming through that airport of some sort of service, it gets harder and harder to justify, especially in the financial times right now. So as long as they're following rules, and that doesn't come under us, but as long as they're following the rules, I agree with Rep. Tarnas, that we, we need the economic development and that better justifies and better utilizes the state facility, which we need, and I'm sure is going to grow with need in the future. So got to follow the rules, but I agree with Rep. Tarnas on that.
Thank you very much. Well, that's going to do it for our questions this evening. First, I want to thank all the community members that took the time to submit questions to our elected officials here. It's great to hear from them, kind of on the fly here a little bit, and their thoughts on some of these things. So I appreciate, I appreciate you taking the time to answer those there as well. If you do have, you know, specific questions and we weren't able to get to them, I do apologize. But do please reach out to your council member or your elected official representative, your senator. They're more than willing to answer your questions there, and we can always help you direct you to them and get you connected. So I appreciate you doing that, and I apologize if we didn't get to your specific question. And so before we close tonight's meeting, I just wanted to, wanted to thank everyone here on the call that joined us. We had our elected officials. We start off with Captain Byrd. So thank you so much, Captain, for joining us and talking about police updates here on the community and providing that support our community needs during this time. We're also grateful to hear from Kahului Theater and all their exciting news. So welcome to Sarah and the team there. Thank you so much for all the work that you do in our community to provide us to this wonderful source of entertainment and also connectedness to the community and our culture and keeping us, keeping us going during this hard time. So thank you so much, Sherman, your team there. And of course, I want to thank all of our elected officials on our delegation here. Start off with Senator Anoy and then Representative Mark Nakashima, Representative Tarnas. We had, we heard from our OHA trustee, Kiola Lindsay. Thank you so much. And our council members here representing the Waimea area. We had Counselor Heather Kimball on the, on the east side of town here. And then, of course, Counselor Tim Richards. So thank you so much for being a part of this. And of course, thank you to our board members, Mike Donnelly and Riley Smith, for posing these questions, these hard questions to our elected officials here. So thank you so much. So mahalo, Nui. That's wonderful to hear from all of you. Wish you a happy new year, of course, and look forward to hearing all the work that you're doing this year and keeping us going and supporting our communities during this challenging time. And of course, thank you to all of our viewers on the live stream. And for those of you watching the film, this film and recording later on, you're always welcome to revisit and re-watch these recordings on our YouTube page or upon our Facebook page. Our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, February 4. And it is our goal to hear from our newly-elected mayor, Mayor Mitch Roth, and some of his department heads that evening. So we'll keep you informed about that. And on behalf of the Waimea Community Association Board, I want to wish you a good health. Be well. Aloha.